Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission, 23rd of March, 6 o'clock. Now I'll call this meeting to order. We'll go ahead and start with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, who is with us today? Is Denise here?
Denise is online, yes.
Denise, do you want to go ahead and call Row for us, please? Denise, you're on mute.
Okay, can you?
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, roll call. Chairman Maloney. Commissioner Clark.
Aye. Here.
Commissioner Clement.
Here.
Commissioner Ladue.
Here.
Commissioner Suthar.
Here.
Commissioner Moss. And Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Okay.
All right, I believe that we have the approval of the minutes for February 23rd. Are there any changes for those meeting minutes? Do I have any? I need to have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, do I get a second, please?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Thank you, sir. All right, the February 23rd meeting minutes have been approved. Could I get a roll call, Denise?
Certainly. Who made the motion?
Kirk.
Okay. Commissioner Suthar.
Aye.
Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
And Commissioner Smith.
Aye. And we had a special meeting on March the 2nd, and to see if we have any changes for that special meeting. Any concerns or changes? All right, I'll need a motion for approval for that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March 2nd.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brian. All right, Denise, would you please call Row?
Certainly. Commissioner Clark.
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue.
Aye.
Commissioner Clement.
Aye.
Commissioner Suthar.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
Aye. Now we'll go ahead and open up for the public hearing, the provisions of the city municipal code, and in particular Title 17, therefore the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive city or plan of the city of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as set forth verbatim. Can we have a staff report from the city planner, please?
Certainly. Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, you'll recall that this item came before you at your February 23rd regular meeting. There was some discussion about this as part of a public hearing, and Planning Commission provided staff with some modifications that they wanted to see made to this particular ordinance and continued the matter to this evening. So this is your second round public hearing about this. Also present this evening, for the benefit of this conversation, is our city administrator, Ryan Stevens. We also have our city attorney present via Zoom, and Austin Pierce Flanagan is our city attorney this evening. And basically, the message that when staff reviewed the changes that Planning Commission wanted to make, the message that came back was, okay, the items pertaining to modifications on how far you could be from an outlet or something like that, those were all fine. The problem got into when we started talking about the resource manual that someone is going to have to look at and create, that's really going beyond what the intent behind this was. It was also kind of going beyond the intent behind this to have these uses available as 12-month-per-year kind of uses, because that means they're not temporary. If they're operating 12 months out of the year, they're permanent. And if they're going to be permanent, the appropriate thing to do would actually be to amend Title 17, the particular zone district, to make them a permitted use. I'm not certain that you want to do that with temporary outdoor shelters or safe outdoor spaces or overnight shelters. I think the intention was those were supposed to be temporary in nature. What the city is attempting to do here, as Commissioner Clement is aware, because she was spearheading this project through the end of 2021 into early 2022, we have had a safe outdoor space that's been operating on a portion of unbuilt right-of-way over at Independence Road, just a little bit east of Justice Center Road, Justice Center Drive. Unfortunately, under our current municipal code, we have no provision for camping within the municipality. So technically, the city has been allowing this to operate even though it's not in conformance with our zoning code, because in picking our poison, which would be worse having someone say, hey, you know, you're not following your own zoning code by allowing this to be there, versus, okay, the city's going to enforce its zoning code and have someone to say, well, why are you being so cruel to the homeless during the middle of winter and kicking them out? I think we would rather say with a straight face, all right, we know we're not in compliance with our zoning, we're looking into this and we're going to fix it, than the latter. So that's ultimately why this ordinance was put together. In your packets this evening, you've got the red line comments from Planning Commission after your last meeting, and the clean version of what came back to us. Commissioner Suthar pointed out to me that on page two, there's a sub-paragraph F that's left blank that I think was supposed to have been deleted and somehow did not get deleted, and we will go ahead and fix that. But anyway, as a way of background, there's three of those?
No, there's on page three, there's one.
On page three, too, yeah.
Oh.
G, 4G.
Okay. So, yeah, we will get those fixed. But as way of background, that's to bring you up to speed on what has happened since you last considered this matter a month ago.
All right, well, since we have no one in the audience to ask or answer any questions, are there any questions of staff from council?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. In the conversation we had last time about this issue, I think we went to the 12-month position after a long discussion about how are we going to monitor, for lack of better words, them not being there for a full year? How are we going to make sure that doesn't just continue?
So, you want me to take a stab at that, Ryan?
So, I want to make sure I'm understanding your question correctly. The question is about if people continue to camp after a four-month or six-month period?
Correct.
Yep. So, you know, the process that's being created here with this change would allow for that usage over a given period, and there would have to be, for lack of a better word, a sponsor, you know, whether it's Loaves and Fishes or Soul Vista, or somebody who is taking a lead role in operating a safe outdoor space. And during that temporary period, that permit would allow for camping during that time. Anything after that time, the regular camping bans, you know, occupying the right-of-way when you're not supposed to, those rules would be enforced unless a permit has been granted.
And that enforcement usually happens through the police department?
That is correct.
Okay.
So, in my mind, when we, going back to what we discussed, if a permit's issued in, let's just say January, and it would end in June, then another one could be theoretically issued in July and run to December.
Not within-
By a different organization.
By a different organization?
Yes, sir.
Provided that they-
Theoretically, still have that whole year of issue.
You theoretically could. I think, as Patrick mentioned, the intent of this was to provide additional space, additional bed space and shelter during the winter months. You know, so, you know, that was the intent of it.
But we're not limiting it to the winter months?
No. And that may be a question for the attorney, whether or not you can limit it to a specific period of time.
Is she with us?
We've got Austin today.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. You could limit it to a specific period of time, but it would be incredibly hard to enforce. There isn't any outright legal issue that would come up from it, but it would be an enforcement issue more than anything else.
Well, when you say enforcement, it's just a matter of someone monitoring and saying, yeah, you're here illegally. But that back-to-back month issue, does that get resolved with an enforcement, as far as issuing a permit for six months and then another six months for with a different organization?
Are you asking if you could have that time period in the permit, and that be enforceable?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm asking you that, and at the same flip side of that, do we even want to do that? Or are we just going to limit this to the winter months, which is probably the most critical time of year, and leave it at that? Do we run into a legal bind with that?
You don't. You could absolutely limit the permits and limit them differently, depending on who the applicant is. And it would just be enforced as a matter of the permit. You could do it through the code, like Patrick was saying, and have different tiers. It would become increasingly more complex to be administered, but you could do it. The easier way to do it would be to limit it through the permit and have, you know, a good reason in each permit why you're limiting it for that period. It just would be based off the need of that individual applicant.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions or concerns?
I have some.
Yes, or Brian?
So, the answer of, you know, adding actual requirements to the bullet points, in the response, the response is that ultimately the shelter provider to answer, you know, how they will meet the bullet point requirements. I think the point was there aren't actually requirements in the ordinance. Let's take trash, for example. I mean, it's required to have a plan for exterior appearances of the area. If the plan says, we're just going to clean trash at the end of six months, are we okay with that just being provided on record? I think that the point was providing some goalposts or specifics that say it needs to be cleaned every third day, every 72 hours, you know, every 24 hours. Something specific like that, you know, is an example. I mean, the details, and I think if we're going to go through with an ordinance, details like that would be perhaps reasonable, especially for the people who are reviewing it. I mean, if it's just submit a plan-
So, basically, I don't know if this is what he's saying, but we have an ordinance, and this is what we're supposed to do, but then if they don't do it, then what are the repercussions for it, I guess?
And the point is, it's vague enough that we're not even requiring specific things to do. We're just requiring a plan.
Right.
And, for example, the trash, all right, the plan says we're going to clean up at the end of six months. That's not acceptable to me. You know, why don't we, you know, in that exterior appearance bullet, say something specific like trash has to be picked up on, you know, somebody has to be there on, you know, every 72 hours, you know, otherwise it's blowing into the neighbor's yard. That's the kind of detail I think I was looking for. Just putting it on record or just having it and having it out there is not adequate.
So, as this is a draft ordinance, where does it go from here? We send it to council, but then what happens to it, I mean, as a draft? Once council gets it, do they, is it a mandate then, or?
No, remember, Planning Commission acts as a filter for items that will go forward to council eventually. So, your recommendation pertaining to this ordinance will accompany the ordinance to council. Council will consider the ordinance, and if they decide to make additional changes, they can certainly do that, too.
So, Austin, can you talk a little bit more about why specific provisions that Commissioner Ladue is asking for can't be put into the ordinance, or it's not recommended to put it into the ordinance?
It's difficult to have that level of detail in the code. And I think the reason that it was drafted more broadly is that we can catch a lot more issues if it's a broader catch. Like, if the net is broader and the language isn't so specific, then we can say, you're not doing adequate maintenance, that's a violation of the code, and we will revoke this permit if you don't do adequate maintenance. And if they say, we think it's adequate, all we have to say is, well, it's not, and we get to decide what's adequate or not. And so, those broader provisions allow us a lot more leeway in the future. And those really specified provisions sometimes have the effect of tying us up, of saying, oh, we just checked this box, and we're good to go, the trash is picked up. And we can say, well, there's still trash there. Even though you got it picked up, there's still trash there, and that's not adequate to us. Does that answer your question a little bit, Ryan?
A little bit. I guess then the follow-up is whom is-
Who's the monitor?
Yeah, and like, I mean, judging adequacy, I mean, if I'm the permit holder, I'm going to be like, well, there's no definition of adequacy. Like, if it's that vague, let's scratch a bunch of this.
Let me ask a question before that question, Austin. So, you know, they submit a plan to staff, and staff deems that the plan is not adequate because their plan is to pick up trash every six months. We can kick that back to them and say, you need a better plan as far as trash pickup goes. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
But their question is, okay, what do I have to do to get you to say okay? And at some point, we're going to have to make a decision. I understand the, you know, vague part of it, but I think it's always going to come back to, and Mr. Stevens is going to come back to you, all right, what does the plan actually need to say to get your approval?
Yep.
And that's, and then it's, you know, fine, it's a staff decision at that point, but, you know, here we are in Planning Commission. If it's going to be staff level, then great, let's, you know, let's be done and leave it at staff level.
Well, I have a question. Is it possible, legally acceptable, to basically have a checklist, not written into the ordinance, but a checklist in Ryan's office?
Yeah.
That would be something everybody would read, pretty much agree to, and stick with that, rather than-
Yeah.
Today, Ryan's not there, and he says, yeah, we're good, and then someone else, or he's not there, and someone says, yeah, we're good, and then he comes back and says, no, no, we're not good with it.
Yeah, and I think that's ultimately why you don't want to put necessarily very specific restrictions into the ordinance, because if you need to make changes, maybe they're not strict enough. You have to come back to Planning Commission, and you have to take two readings of council.
Right.
Whereas if it's something that is administratively, you know, administrative checklist or something along those lines, we can adjust that much quicker. It gives us more flexibility as staff.
But by way of a reminder, those of you who are on Planning Commission in 2019, you'll remember that there were some conversations that went forward involving certain sections pertaining to code enforcement that ultimately got revised on things like trash collection and whatnot.
Right.
And part of the reason that we did that was they were so specifically written that in most cases, anyone could violate them without knowing it because of the strict way that they were worded. So, when the revisions took place in 2019, they were written a bit more broadly with the understanding that there would be a policy manual on the enforcement associated with these, what was the intent and what needs to happen with this. Something similar could certainly happen with these. With respect to the checklist items, wherever they talk about in the ordinance, a description of, they begin the paragraph with a description of, that's almost binary. They provided a description, okay, we can read the description and say, yeah, that's a description, or no, it's not. Where they're talking about a plan for, and they do that where they're talking about managing the exterior appearance, including trash and litter and hazardous materials, a plan for compliance with the provisions that must be provided under this section, a plan for how the shelter will minimize impact, there, I think that's going to be the subject of some sort of an administrative policy manual as to where the bright line will fall as to what qualifies and what doesn't, as a plan that addresses these needs.
I wish you well. I mean, that's, we've, you know, the Main Street issue was an administrative conundrum. I mean, that's, I get it, but, good luck. You know, that's a- Yeah.
It is a tangled web.
Yes, and I guess that's, and I don't, I don't know that I was looking for specifics enough, you know, super, you know, that kind of specificity, but something, I don't know, the guidelines, to make your life easier, and to make frankly the general public have something to say, oh, if I end up with a SOS next door, you know, I can go to the ordinance, and it says, somebody will be by daily to do this and this. Or it's a bullet point, not necessarily requirement, but it, somewhere in the ordinance, it gives me an idea, like, somebody will be by on daily basis, not just a, you know, a plan that Mr. Stevens is going to review. And I have to go downtown, and I have to, you know, set up a meeting with Mr. Stevens and get my concerns that this place is going to be unsupervised for seven days at a time, addressed.
Right.
And I guess ultimately, I have confidence in the staff, but it's, that's a tall order, and, you know, and also, future staff, interim staff, I mean, it's, you know, wow, that's a, you know, it's a tough place to put yourself in, future staff, and-
It is, but, you know, the fact that it is still, you know, it still has to go through a permitting process. You know, we're not, you know, somebody can't just walk out there and do it. We know who the partner is coming in that's asking for this. We know if they've done it before, if they haven't done it before. You know, we, you know, as Patrick mentioned, you know, the administrative policy, putting that out to the partner so they know what's expected when they're putting together that plan.
And I think that's the, you know, to know what's expected.
Yep. And again, I think, you know, the ordinance is written in a way to give staff enough flexibility to put together that policy so that, again, we can flex or, you know, be nimble to change something if we need to.
And do we get in, you know, I can see, you know, location-wise, you know, a site is specific, so this site doesn't need exactly what this site needs, but then you're potentially going to have operators say, you don't require that of, you know, them, what's the story? And the answer's going to be, well, the ordinance is vague enough, it's a staff-level decision. Also a tough position to put yourself in.
It is. You know, I don't think the intention of this is to have a whole bunch of SOSs around town. This is-
And do we need to limit, I mean, if that isn't the intention, and, you know, perhaps this needs some additional limitation to match that expectation.
And I think, you know, that may be a question for Austin as far as whether or not something like that would be allowed in this case.
But it said two things. Another thing that the broad applicability of the ordinance does is when staff does get an application before then, they can look at it and really analyze the impacts of that particular project on the neighborhood. You know, if it's going to be in a more populated area, then, yeah, you're going to have a lot more standards put in place that we couldn't really anticipate in the ordinance. And the opposite may be true if it's in a more rural area, something to consider as far as that goes. As far as putting some sort of cap, you can do it, but there's a lot of legal requirements on putting a cap on any sort of zoning requirement, so we'd have to really work through that. But would be maybe an easier process is limiting it to even further eliminate an area.
And, you know, as far as area goes, it was, you'll see, it's on page four of what I'm looking at, which is the red line version, any property zoned in general, commercial, or industrial, under section three.
There any more comments or questions? Yes, sir.
I do think that having a checklist to go with that is a really good idea, in that I'm fully confident that staff can make those decisions and keep an eye on things. It's not as if we're going to have 15 or 20 of these, and I think that they could, that that's a really good solution, Gary, that you brought up with the checklist.
One other thing, I'm sorry, Commissioner Suthar, the process of evaluating this doesn't end when a permit is issued. There is still a whole code enforcement arm of the city that if a neighboring property owner says this thing is, it's preventing people from wanting to visit my business, it's an eyesore, it's causing traffic jams, whatever, they have the ability to report what they think are violations. Those violations would then be investigated by code enforcement and law enforcement where necessary, and if abatement needs to happen, it will, up to and including revocation of the permit.
And how does that actually function? You know, they came to you with this list of plans, and the city staff said, okay, they went forth, the neighbor complains, you know, how does that actually function? Do you say, ah, you're, you know, the complaint's valid, the review of the plans wasn't, didn't, you know, cover tracks, right? At this point, I can see that it wasn't adequate. Is that, you know, again, a position that, you know, I like how fluid it is, but at the same time-
Well, I think at that point, it would be, it's going to expire in six months, so we're going to, I would think Ryan's office would make some type of correction to that.
Well, the evaluation from a code enforcement standpoint would be, okay, we've received a complaint that these folks are creating some sort of a hazard. Let's take a look at what the plan says. Aha, it looks like they may be violating this provision. They go out and investigate, they see what they have in the way of evidence to support the complaint that's come in, and then they take the appropriate action based upon the complaint. They'll contact whoever's operating the SOS. They'll say, this is a problem that needs to be fixed. They'll give them a certain amount of time to fix it, and if they don't, at that point, it becomes, it escalates to the next level of a code enforcement response. And that would go all the way to, potentially, you know, if we have to cite the operator of the SOS into court, the court could just- of the SOS into court, the court could just revoke the permit and say, that's it, the SOS has to go away.
But if the, the plan was provided, plan approved, complaint comes in and, you know, the operator says, hey, I'm, I'm following my plan that was approved by staff, you know, can we actually go to court with a, a vague, there, there's no requirement, we're, we're not putting requirements in there, it, it just comes down to that staff level decision of, I approved the permit, but now I see that it's inadequate, that's, if I'm an operator, I'm going to be rather upset that, hey, I got my permit, it was approved, I have a plan in there about trash, and now the neighbor complains, city staff came back to me and said, you're not, you know, the vague plan without anything in it, I'm not following, like, how does, how does it actually function if that, if it comes to that?
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, the, the goal here, Austin, I know you have something to say here, but I, I think the goal comes back to those administrative policies again. You know, we don't want a vague plan, we, you know, well, you know, this gives us enough flexibility to put some parameters from a, from that administrative standpoint so that we're not getting a vague plan. The, the other aspect that, you know, Patrick mentioned is, you know, having code enforcement and the police department involved with copies of those plans so they know what those expectations are, so when they are out there checking on these, you know, on, on an SOS site, you know, they, they know what is in the plan and they, you know, they can cite them or, you know, we, you know, let us know what, what those issues might be. Again, I'll go back to the, the fact that, you know, there, there has to be a lead agency on this, we're working with those agencies as partners in the community. You know, I, I don't see this, you know, this isn't something that's going to go to an individual or somebody doesn't have the capacity with those, you know, to not know what those expectations are.
And I, and I, thank you, appreciate it, the, and you know, we keep, knowing what those expectations are, I think that's sort of the root of it, I, I don't know what those are, you know, and that's, again, I get the vagueness, but I, I don't know what the expectations are, so I, you know, it's.
And, and I think that's, that's the next step after this, you know, plan is developed is, is working on whatever those administrative policies are going to be.
And is that, would we want any of that before an ordinance goes to council? I mean, is that not?
Not, not typically, because those administrative policies, they're not approved by council, they can be changed, so, you know, that, again, it goes back to the fluidity of that document. Austin, did you have something else that you wanted to add?
Well, that was great, Ryan, I would just say, whenever you get into one of those situations where you feel like the adverse impacts of this use are not being taken into account, then you absolutely have mechanisms within the city to take action and to revoke the permit, both through the language written now, like the plan language, and certainly as a nuisance separately from either of those first two.
And I guess I just, I foresee that you're revoking my permit, but I'm, you know, but I'm following the plan that was approved, it's just that neighbor man complained, that that's, it's an ugly mess, is, is what it comes down to. And, and so then the question becomes, is, is that actually going to occur? Or do we wait for six months to show, you know, show up and we, okay, we'll, we'll do better next time? You know, it seems like a little, I don't know, a little more specifics, a little more planning would, would hopefully alleviate some of that, so that we don't get into that situation. But if, if city staff's ready and willing, you know, I guess I can.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, staff is ready and willing to develop those administrative policies based off of this ordinance, and, you know, trust me, I don't want to be in that position any more than you don't want me to be in that position or the city to be in that position. You know, we, we work with the attorneys on developing our administrative policies, you know, they have other clients that they have worked with regarding developing these, you know, these types of administrative policies, and we, we rely a lot on that experience. So, you know, you know, we utilize, you call our municipal league has, you know, ListServe and other, other municipalities that have been through this, and, you know, we reach out to other municipalities and take a look at the things that they've developed as well, and incorporate a lot of that into what, you know, the work that we do, we have to make it, make it ours, you know, we can't just take something from somewhere else and plug it in, but, you know, taking, taking all of that insight from all of the experts, you know, we're not doing this in a vacuum, and making sure, you know, that we're trying to address those unintended consequences, because that's, that's a big thing for me, I don't like unintended consequences, and you want to make sure that we're trying to address those things before they become issues.
Now, those, are those administrative policies ultimately available to the public?
They can be, yes, yep, I mean, you know, they're going to be public record, absolutely, you know, so, somebody that's coming in to fill out a permit, I mean, that's going to be a policy that, you know, something they're going to be picking up.
I just, I just maybe want to hear from Commissioner Clement for a minute, because if I'm understanding this correctly, this, we're already doing this, this ordinance is just to make us legal, correct? So that we're not violating the camping ban that's already in place?
I think for, for the most part, I don't know that we received a formal plan per se, but we were at the table as they were having those discussions on what those expectations were for, for the SOS and.
And this would be the first step in the process, and after this passes through council, that's when staff gets to work on the, the actual policy?
Uh, yes.
Or administrative policy?
Yeah, the, the administrative policy, yes, I mean, you know, I, I think if, as we work through the steps and we see that something like this is going to pass, we can start working on those administrative policies before it passes, but, you know, those are certainly those types of considerations. And, you know, the, there is that benefit of having this, something like this operating for a year is, there are a lot of lessons learned that can be written into those administrative policies.
And, and we're not just, this isn't just Joe Schmo off the street applying for these permits, these are nonprofit organizations that have good filings with 501(c)(3), they're, they're not fly-by-night things, they're actually loaves and fishes, I believe, you know, they're a part of our community, they're a partner.
Correct.
And I guess, speaking of unintended consequences, this isn't specific to that site, so it is, I mean, the, the basis is for more than just that site, otherwise we'd make this specific. So, so we, we do need to think that this will apply to something other than just the existing site we want to bring into conference.
It could potentially apply to another site, yes, I, I think from a zoning standpoint, you can't, you can't apply it to a specific site.
But it's still an approval of administration.
Correct.
If I can introduce a philosophical note here, we are breaking new ground with this, this is not something that the city has ever permitted previously, and there's always a bit of trepidation when you're breaking new ground and doing something new and different, so, I mean, they're administratively, we may have to make some changes on the fly to the administrative policy, that's not unusual in circumstances like this, but our intent is so that the city can say with a straight face, we are no longer turning a blind eye to a violation of our zoning codes that we know is occurring.
So in the future, in next year about this time, if we need to make changes, we can make the amendments to the ordinance as necessary.
Or amendments to the administrative policy of how this is actually implemented.
Right, this is not going to be in stone, in case something that we found did not work, then we can come back and revisit it.
Correct.
But if I understood the first meeting correctly, although, yeah, this is breaking new ground for us here, there's plenty of historical locations that we can refer back to for guidance in creating this.
There are a number of other municipalities that have adopted similar ordinances, and Ryan was talking about some of the methods we get information about.
So we're not vetting.
Where their trial and errors have gone and what they've learned from them.
Right.
Well, and ultimately, council, when we looked at comprehensive plan and the rewrites of two titles, in effort to be more business friendly and not make developers or come to council or wait for a second reading on council, we, we wrote it to where we could charge staff to make those decisions, correct, Ryan?
That is correct.
Well, at this point, I'd like to do one thing, before we even consider voting on this, I'd like to move this, the issues we talked about earlier about F.
Yes.
Because we're not eliminating F, we're actually eliminating K, so we're going to be moving everything below, up into F, G, H, I, and J.
We, we will make those, those corrections for the, the version that goes forward.
But we're going to have to have that in the motion tonight. Okay, so that's on page two, and then on page three.
Pages two and three.
In section four, we're moving up, what would, is labeled here as I, and we're just moving it up to G.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any additional comments or questions?
Actually, yes.
Yes, sir, go ahead, Commissioner.
Back, back to this, the seasonality and the six-month discussion, I spend a lot of time in, in open spaces, and, and, you know, that's, that's where I see the, the negative impacts the most. In the winter months, either they're, they're not there or they're better hiding, I, I don't know which it is, but it, it is the summer months that the impact of the open spaces is, is worse. And so, I guess I'd like to have some discussion of, I, I understand that the cold months, you know, that's, that's worse if you're, if you're looking for shelter. From a public impact standpoint, it's the summer months that, that outdoor use seems to grow during the warm months because it's nicer to be out. I don't know what they do in the wintertime, but it, I, depending on how they find shelter, I would almost like to see an SOS in the six months of summer such that the city can, when we find them on open spaces, we can say, hey, this exists here, you need to be there, you know, in a structured format. If, if it's only a wintertime thing, then in the summer, it's like, well, we're, we're back to the problems we have now, and, and we don't have a place to point them, and, you know, it's a lot easier to enforce a no camping ordinance if there's an option. And I think that seems like sort of the root, but if, yeah.
Let me say, Austin, correct me if I'm wrong, we're not saying you can't do this during the summer, we're just limiting this to a six-month period.
Yeah, my understanding is that the main prerogative with the ordinance is creating an ability to permit this use, and in that permitting, you will have different limiting constraints, including temporal constraints, is that correct, Patrick?
Temporal constraints are six months out of a 12-month period, but it doesn't specify which months you can't submit something for this.
So we could theoretically have one during the summer.
The way it's currently written, yes.
Okay.
And I think it's important for the public to understand that, you know, it, there's a difference of, yeah, we're, we're going to open up room in the wintertime versus we're going to open up in the summer, I, you know, I understand that the, the impacts I see are, are worse in the summer, but the, frankly, it's cold out in the winter, I mean, that's, that's its own issue. I think we just need to be open, public needs to understand that, that, you know, as written, different operators, I mean, we could see these year-round because they're operated by different entities, you know, it's, the, the six month is a technical verbiage that in the end to the public doesn't matter, it's, could exist, and I guess this, you know, not being site-specific, is it same site, different operator, different permit, 12 months out of the year? You know, it's just, all right, we're, we're the summer operator, they're the winter operator, and, and then the, the public sees a year-round thing, whereas the ordinance said six months, are, are we accomplishing what we want?
I think a lot of these are just really hypothetical, and what it would be really nice to see is actually when we have one or two of them, to track it and see if some of these problems are really problems, just like what you were saying, because it's, it's very difficult to know one way or the other whether these problems are going to exist.
Dee, Dee, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Clement, can, can you talk a little bit from a loaves and fishes perspective of what you see your bed count summer versus winter?
Um, so, our, our numbers are actually, we are getting ready to expand our emergency shelter to 38, and what led to the SOS to start with was our construction, and so we are, we were prior to the construction, a 17-bed shelter, construction led us to drop it down to 10, and so, when we were at 17, we were turning people away every single night, summer versus winter, it didn't really matter, we were always turning people away. And, and so, the idea of COVID, you know, was around that time also, and we had heard from other communities across the state of Colorado, what they were doing to house people who were living on the street was creating these SOSs, so that kind of came to the conversation about, could we do something like that, knowing that there isn't a safe place for people to, to stay who are homeless, and we don't want them in our, our parks, we don't want them on BLM land, all those places, and so that kind of brought about that, the construct, or that, the place that we currently have. I would say that our numbers in the winter are, are high, but to your point is that a lot of times, people who are from Fremont County, they may be able to stay with a friend or a family member for the two or three months of winter that we get here in Fremont County, but you're right, in the summer months, I think if we would talk to the BLM, you've seen it yourself, as you just said, you see a lot of people on BLM land, and so, what I would suggest is that we keep it to the 12 months, that we don't identify that it's winter months or it's summer months, let's just keep it to the two, the, the six months and just see where it lands. And to your point about that, we are going to have all these agencies stepping up and wanting to create an SOS, that is not the case, there are no agencies who want to step up and do an SOS because they are a lot of work, and they, it takes a lot of manpower and a lot of volunteers to make it happen, and we, the, what we're doing right now, it was limited to eight tents, and it was, it was a lot of work, and so, I don't think we're going to be flooded, and we, it's very clear that a private citizen cannot say, I'm going to open an SOS site in my backyard, right, because it's, you have to be on certain zoning, and, and if you're living in, in the city limits, you're not in those, that zoning area, and so, I think those things are problems that probably will not happen. I don't see it happening where, to your point, well, first six months, or excuse me, loaves and fishes is going to take it, and then a next six month, another nonprofit, I don't know what other nonprofit would take it right now, I'm not saying that wouldn't happen.
Yeah, and I think that's the.
I hear what you're saying.
We're making an ordinance that applies to that broadness, whether it's there or not.
Right. But like we have been saying, that this is, this ordinance probably would never even be considered two years ago, the fact that we're even having this conversation, I think just says a lot about our community and a desire to make it a safe place for everyone, and that includes homeowners and those, that includes people who don't have a home. And so I think kudos to you guys, staff, for, for the work that you've done to making this possible, but we don't know what we don't know, and, and I don't want staff to have to clean up messes afterwards, but I know that just the process that we went through just to develop what we have with those eight tents, we actually have a task force, an SOS task force that was meeting, we went through policies and procedures, we created all of this stuff, we, we have a, an agreement that all the campers signed to, we had community service providers agreed to provide case management, and so, there was a lot of work was a lot of work that's involved that maybe is not necessarily laid out here in the ordinance, but I think we know that if we were going to submit something to the city, we need to address all that, 'cause we've learned a lot, and, and we know what needs to be addressed, yeah. 'Cause we want it to be successful.
And I, and I guess the, you know, that's a lot of work, and, and it, it becomes successful, and so, it, it, at the six-month mark, it is very hard to step away, especially when there's the need. It, you know, so that's, man, we put in all this work, it, it, it's here, it functions, everything's fine, except we're at the end of six months. That, that's hard, you know? And, you know, if, if, if it's functioning, and, and we've gone through all the effort, but we're gonna back away just because it's six months, you know, if, if, if everyone's happy, and the investment's made, why, why step back just because?
And that's a great point, and with the last time we met, we talked about that, right? Let's not do that, let's not limit it to six months, and then, but from what you had shared earlier, the, the six-month is actually necessary from a, a legal perspective, if I'm understanding correctly.
To differentiate temporary from permanent.
And the idea also behind the safe outdoor spaces is that it is not anyone's permanent home. That, that's the other thing that really needs to be clear. That's the reason why you have all of these case managers and the whole, you know, the community of service providers are working together to move people out of the camp. And that's what we've seen at our little test pilot, is that we have seen people go from there and move into housing, but...
And in the, the test plot, how, how long has that been in existence?
So that started on September, Labor Day weekend, and it will be wrapping up. So, for us, for Loaves and Fishes, we know that our emergency shelter is going to be, hopefully, opening up in April, and, like I said, it'll be 38 beds. And so, our plan is, is right now, we only have three campers at the SOS site, 'cause we have been intentionally reducing the numbers, because we know that ultimately, we are going to go to the SOS and say, we are gonna close this down, and you are invited to come into our emergency shelter. And if they choose not to come into our emergency shelter, that's their choice, but they are no longer allowed to stay there. And then we will do our part to make sure that they're not camping over there. If they're not gonna listen to us, then, you know, maybe we'll call law enforcement. I will, I don't know, we'll figure out what we need to do, but we're gonna, they'll be, they'll be told that they're no longer allowed to stay there.
And the, the legality of temporary versus permanent, what's...
Well, if you're gonna allow it to operate a full 12 months out of the year, then it's a permanent use. If you limit it to six months, and I understand the argument you're making, okay, so we've got operator A putting it in place from January to June, and then operator B keeping it at the same location from June to December. First of all, I'm not convinced that's what's going to happen. I don't know that we've got that many number of operators who will be wanting to come forward and actually take up the burden of operating one of these facilities. Even if they did, I think we'd have some questions for them about, okay, how are you defining this so that it is not a permanent use? We don't want to amend the zoning code, to make this a permanent fixture of the C or I, the GC or I zone districts, therefore, we have set these standards. Now, I'm not saying that a year from now, we might not need to come back before you with a tweak to some of this, but we're not gonna know that until we put this legislation in place. And unfortunately, if we don't put the legislation in place, we are technically criminalizing homelessness in the community, and I don't think that's a position a local government wants to be in.
But the six, six of 12 satisfies a permanent, or, excuse me, six out of 12 months satisfies a temporary, but 24 months out of 36 would not? Is that, I mean, is, is there a legal definition of temporary versus permanent?
Well, by this definition, it would be six months. So if operator B comes along and says, we wanna keep this camp operating, we're probably gonna have some questions for them about, okay, is there going to be a break in the operations, or is it gonna be continuous? How are we gonna make sure that this does in fact fit our definition of temporary?
And I guess that's what is the definition of temporary?
Let the attorney answer that question.
So I think Patrick got it right, in that it's up to the language of the code. Typically, temporary permits will have that backstop in there, in the code, and then, again, in the permitted language. So, in the code, you can say, this temporary use shall not exist for more than six months, like we've done here. And you can go the step further of saying, in the permit, this one should really only be allowed for three months, or what have you. But you can't go counter to the code requirements. There's no actual definition of what a temporary use is, but you can't start treating it like you would a permitted use, because then you have to go through that procedural requirement for a permitted use. So if you're gonna have it there for longer than a year, then you really should be considering it a permit, a permitted use, and not a temporary one. And so I think that's kind of the cutoff. Typically, what people think of as a temporary use is something like a carnival, that wouldn't take place for more than a season. And so typically, when you think temporary use, temporary permit, you're thinking seasonality. This is just filling a temporary need.
And I, I think, you know, to, to take this back to the similar conversation that we had last night regarding UTVs, we're, we're taking a slow, measured approach, you know, take, you know, turning that spigot very slowly to see how this, how this affects. You know, we don't, we don't wanna open those floodgates right out the, out, out the gate, right? We wanna, wanna tailor this as we go to see what works and what doesn't, and if we need to make tweaks, we can come back and make tweaks.
Are there any further comments or questions? Anything from the city planner?
No, sir.
I believe that Commissioner Clark wanted to make a, an amendment.
Well, I, I did to the paperwork, as far as making a motion.
Well, we can make the motions a little bit. Do we need to do anything as far as, I mean, we know what needs to be...
I would say motion to approve with the repagination minus...
I'll, I'll add that in.
Okay. Well, then, that's what we'll need. Well, do I need to go ahead and close the public hearing then?
You should close the public hearing, yes, sir.
Then, if there aren't any other comments, or questions, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing now, and then we will ask for a recommendation to send this on to city council.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that the planning commission recommend city council adopt the attached draft ordinance regarding amendments to section 17, point 05, point 150, paragraphs I and J concerning temporary shelter slash safe outdoor spaces and overnight shelters, with the corrections to section 5, page 1, and section 4, page 3, to readjust the lettering.
That is great. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, good. All right, so it's gonna go to city council now, and they can, they can amend what they need to, I guess, after us, after the draft. And then, of course, like I said, Mr. Stevens gets it after that. Do we have any further discussion or anything?
We have to take rule.
Yeah. Is Denise still here?
I am.
Go ahead and take rule, Denise. Make this official.
Okay, did Commissioner Suthar second that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, here we go. Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Suthar?
Aye.
Commissioner Clement?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
All right, now it's official, it'll go to city council. Is there anything else we need?
No, sir. Just one announcement for, for you all. As it happens, the individual who puts together your agenda packets and disseminates them to you will be out of the country the last two weeks of April, so you will not be having an April planning commission meeting. I just wanted to give you some advance notice of that.
Do we need to have a talk with that guy?
You should, yes, very definitely.
All right, well, if there's no other, any further announcements, or concerns, or questions, I've got a gavel, and I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting adjourned.